We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
John Walston.
Meredith Moriarty.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Catherine Natter.
Jill O'Beare.
Joe McPhillips.
And Christine Beck and Bob Teigen are not able to be with us tonight. Do we have any PIG students in the audience? Welcome. Thanks for coming to the meeting. Your obligation is to stay until 9:00 or when the meeting is over, whichever one comes first. And there are some sign-out sheets scattered around the table up here. Don't leave without signing out. That way you guys get credit for being here. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the April 19th, 2023 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item three, meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report. Sure, thank you. I'd like to congratulate six of our high school students who were selected to have their art included in the 24th Annual High School Regional Juried Art Exhibition at the Albany Center Gallery. This year, there were 113 pieces that were chosen, including nine from Bethlehem. The featured artists were Rose Berbrick, Jacob Bloom, Natalie Broncetti, Anson Chamberlain, Drew Kohler, and Sabrina Yu. So I'd like to congratulate those students, and we do have some pictures of them on our website, and I think they're on the Facebook page. I'd also like to thank everyone who helped to volunteer at the Eagle Challenge. It was a weekend event. It was a bit soggy at times, but people braved the elements. Special thanks to John Walston, who was able to garner a lot of community support for the event. And my last recognition goes to Holly. Yes, we received this for you from the New York State School Boards Association for your participation for leadership development opportunities and totaling 500 points. So you get to hang this on a wall wherever you would like. And you get this. Are you taking a picture? I'm all red. I told you I'd get you. What, you did? You did. Do I have to hold it up?
Yes.
She's a little embarrassed. And that's all I have. And that's all. All right. Any questions for Jody? You laughed at me. Next up is our board report. I also wanted to thank everybody who put together and participated in the Eagle Challenge. I have fun walking around the track, and even if it was a little bit rainy, it was a good community event. I wanted to make sure all the board members were aware of the staged Creations production at the middle school that's coming up this weekend, I think Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But I know the information is on the website. It is two one-act plays put on by our middle schoolers. And the policy committee met since our last meeting, and I don't think any of the policies we looked at are on this agenda yet, but there should be some on the next one. We went through a lot of the policies in the 6000s and made some progress with that. And lastly, I believe this is teacher appreciation. So I just wanted to say a big thank you on behalf of the board to all of the teachers in all of our buildings. Anybody have anything else that they would like to share? Next, Student Senate reports. Do we have anybody from the Student Senate?
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Baldwin, the president of Student Senate. And Student Senate would also like to echo the thanks to volunteers as well as all who donated to the Eagle Challenge. We were very happy to see a lot of our community at all the legs of the challenge, including our big truck event. It was really awesome to see children and families having a fun time. And Student Senate was also able to host a tour of the school to a previous class over the weekend, which was really fun to also see the community get together again to see different generations of people in the school and the differences between them, but how we have similar experiences. And we'd also like to thank Mr. Walston for his work on the Eagle Challenge. So, thank you.
Thanks. And I don't think we have anybody here in the middle school. Next up is our presentation this evening. First, we have our 2023-2024 budget overview.
Good evening, all. Just wanted to take a few minutes to sort of give a brief overview of where the district's 23-24 budget stands as of May 3rd, 2023. Sort of a snapshot here. The proposed budget is $106.7 million. That represents approximately a $4 million increase compared to the 22-23 adopted school budget, or a 3.8% increase in estimated appropriation authority. I just want to highlight that that 3.8% increase is well below the inflationary impact that we saw between last year and this year, which was 8%. In order to balance the proposed budget for 23-24, there is a proposed tax levy increase of approximately 2.3%, which is below the allowable levy under the tax cap law. That allowable levy increase was actually 3.08%. What that will translate to residential and commercial owners, both in the town of Bethlehem and the town of New Scotland. At the time that this presentation was put together, the estimated increase was a 2.65% increase for residents within the town of Bethlehem and a 2.1% tax rate decrease in the town of New Scotland. Subsequent to that, as early as today, I was able to actually get updated assessed values for both towns, and those numbers did shift a bit. The actual estimated increase, at least as of today, for the town of Bethlehem is roughly 1.6%, and the actual estimated decrease for the town of New Scotland is just over 3%. So, the business office is always in a bit of an uncomfortable position in terms of calculating tax rates because the information isn't available at the time of the budget presentations. More importantly, the actual assessed value is not ultimately finalized until the end of June with the final assessment roll available on July 1st. So, these numbers may all go through an additional revision between now and July 1st, and when that information and data are available, I'll share and update the board accordingly. Comparison of expenditures and revenue as of April 5th, 2023. When we started this budget process back in February, it was roughly a gap of $719,000. And over the course of several budget discussions with division and departments throughout the district, the gap between expenditures and revenues was roughly $1.6 million, and that's what translated to the $1.6 million proposed tax increase. In terms of category of expense, these are broken up between salaries, fringe, debt service, equipment, and transfers. Salary increases represent roughly a 3.9% increase associated with COLAs and step increases associated with various collective bargaining agreements throughout the district. Fringe benefits saw an increase of approximately 6.2% with hospital medical insurance really driving the increase. We've experienced a significant increase in terms of both utilization and cost, both on hospital medical claims as well as pharmaceutical costs, and those are reflected in the numbers before you. Debt service actually saw a bit of a decrease because we're paying off our bonds and bands at a greater rate, so there is a bit of a decrease for 23-24 compared to 22-23. As we investigate and research opportunities for additional debt services associated with the capital project, those debt services numbers will increase accordingly with what we go out to bond for. In terms of additions and deletions in the department, I'm going to highlight a couple of the large dollar values. In transportation, there was an addition of a telematic specialist between salary and fringe of just under $68,000. In technology, the district considered a number of additions in terms of beefing up both operations and critical staffing needs. $100,000 for a much-needed security operations center, $158,000 in additions in terms of both new and upgraded equipment for both instructional staff as well as students, some changes in applications that the district uses, and two one-time-once allocations for a data web architect and a senior systems administrator. Those individuals are being brought in for a training opportunity because the individuals currently in those positions are scheduled to retire sometime later in 23-24. This will allow passing of institutional knowledge to new employees for a total of roughly $535,000. On the athletic side, some additional funding for a modified football coach, travel expenses for various championships, and the field rental cost of approximately $5,000 as the field gets converted from a grass field to a turf field, and we just broke ground on that last week. Operations and maintenance added $15,000 as a safety valve for pandemic supplies and equipment. And the large component here is always on the instructional side. There's a number of both increases and decreases in terms of instructional needs based on enrollment and current coursework and course load. The estimated additions to the instructional side was roughly $315,000, which was offset by $266,000 in reductions, resulting in a net addition to the instructional program of just under $50,000. On the miscellaneous side of the budget, there was approximately $28,000 dedicated to the Yonder Program, $22,000 for upgrades to tint machines for vision screening for the elementary schools, and approximately $50,000 for upgrades in communications and videography services. This is a summary by program area comparing where we were in the 22-23 adopted budget, where we started, where the district started in terms of the 23-24 baseline back in February, and where the 23-24 proposed budget currently stands, and which will be in front of the voters later in May. Every year, the district dedicates approximately $100,000 to capital outlay. This year, based on a security review and analysis, we're dedicating $100,000 for a door monitoring system for the entrance and egress doors, starting with the high school. These will put buzzers and alert systems on those egress and entrance doors should they be left ajar, notifying administrator staff that a specific door is left open either intentionally or unintentionally, and that will notify the appropriate individuals to go and check those doors and close them. This is a slide that compares the actual allowable growth factor under the tax cap law compared to the actual inflation that is being experienced by the district. And more often than not, the black and orange lines mirror each other, except for the past two years where the inflation growth year-to-year has far outpaced the allowable inflation growth factor allowed by New York State under the tax cap law. In '22, the actual inflation increase was 4.7%, and for '23, it was 8%. So that area of gold-shaded triangle is actually the inflation impact that the district had to absorb internally within its own operations. That's through strategic planning, changes in thinking in terms of what is actually needed versus what was originally needed, and a prioritization of service delivery and operational needs. On the revenue side of the budget, this is a comparison between '22-23 and '23-24. Last year, the adopted tax levy was $69.2 million. The proposed tax levy for '23-24 is $70,824,000. That's roughly an increase of $1.6 million or 2.3%. Pilot payments are up a little bit between '22-23 and '23-24. I'll get into pilots momentarily. A significant increase in state aid between last year and this year, which represents the last year of the phase-in of foundation aid. And other revenues relatively flat for a total revenue of $106.7 million, which balances the proposed appropriation request of that same amount. This is a side-by-side in terms of the breakdown by category within state aid. You can see the large increase in foundation aid for '23-24 and the other distribution of state aid. Some increases and some decreases. Again, building aid is down, again tied to debt service because we're paying less on actual bond and band principal and interest. Transportation is up a little bit. That's tied to both increased expenditures in the transportation department as well as a increased reimbursement rate from roughly 63% to 68%, but a year-to-year increase in state aid of roughly $2.3 million or an increase of 8%. I think this will be the last year that the district actually experiences a sizable increase in state aid of this amount. The forecast moving forward is anywhere between 2% to 2.5% all else being equal. So we spent some time talking about what the allowable tax levy under the tax cap law could be. For '23-24, the district could increase, the tax levy for the district could be roughly $71.4 million. It is being proposed that taxes be levied at $70.8 million. That actually represents a year-to-year increase of $1.6 million in terms of what was the adopted tax levy last year compared to the proposed tax levy this year. The allowable tax levy increase was roughly 3.08%, but the proposed budget for '23-24 is a tax levy increase of 2.3%. That means that roughly $543,000 in available taxing authority is not being utilized by the district for '23-24. If you compare that unused allowable tax levy over the course of the past three years, the district did not tax residents and commercial entities within the district $1.2 million, although it could have under the tax cap law. Moving that sort of concept back further a few years, the blue line represents the district's actual tax levy. The red line represents what the allowable tax levy could have been, the maximum amount for the same time period. So what that translates to is roughly $8.2 million in cumulative savings over the last six budget cycles to individuals within the district, and sort of represents the fiscal stewardship and planning by district administrators, understanding the impact that real property taxes have on the community. This is a three-year comparison in terms of where the district's reserves and fund balance resided at the end of the fiscal years for 2021, 2022, and what is estimated for 2023. At the end of 2023, it's estimated that roughly $40.9 million will be available in rainy day funds for future budget purposes. '23-24 represents the last big year in terms of pilot payments. Pilots stand for payments in lieu of taxes. We're estimating for '23-24 roughly $3.9 million in pilot payments. It's estimated for '24-25 that that pilot figure will drop by $3.4 million as the PSEG pilot reaches the end of that pilot term. It was a 20- or 25-year pilot agreement. '23-24 for the school district is the last year that will benefit from a pilot payment. When that falls off, that's a significant loss of revenue for the district, and under the tax cap law, the loss of that pilot payment would allow the district to increase taxes by roughly 9%. District is fully aware that is both unpalatable and impractical, and will require some planning moving forward, building upon the planning that the district has been making over the past several budget cycles, understanding that the pilot payment was rolling off. Multi-year projection for the next four years in terms of where the budget is estimated to be, both on appropriation and revenue for the next four fiscal years. The first two years are always the easier years to forecast. You have a little bit more information at your disposal in terms of your ins and outs. The next couple of years get a little bit more uncomfortable in terms of projections because there's just a lot of unknowns there. We don't know what state aid may be, if there's going to be a decrease there, what other revenue pinches there may be, if there will be some unknown expenditure increases that the district may experience and plan for. But overall, it stacks up revenues and expenditures, and even with the pilot payment falling off between '23-24 and '24-25, we will be estimating using those rainy day reserves and fund balance to offset that loss as well as other inflationary increases on the expenditure side. Important note here is that for our planning purposes, at least for the next four years, there's a balanced budget using available resources.
Can I just ask a quick clarification of this slide? The use of the fund balance, is that cumulative when you go from 2.6 to 3.1? Or is it, say in '25-26, is that 3.1? Or is it 2.6 plus 3.1?
No, it's, fund balance is used on an isolated year-on-year basis. So, on '24-25, to balance the '24-25 budget, next year's budget, it's estimated that of reserves and/or fund balance, $2.6 million will be needed to balance that budget, almost like a plug. Because even with the revenues that we're anticipating, the expenditures, there's a bit of a gap of $2.6 million. '25-26, because you have expenditures estimated to be increasing at a greater rate than your revenue streams, additional fund balance may be needed above the 2.6. So, because it's somewhat structural in nature, your 2.6, it's not necessarily used again, but it's a one-time plug that you have to make sure that you leave enough fund balance and reserves and management of your available resources moving forward so you have enough money in the subsequent years.
Understood. So in '24-26, we would be using the 2.6 million?
That's correct.
And then in '25-26, another 3.1?
That's correct.
Or 0.7?
No, no, 3.1.
Okay, 3.1, okay, thank you.
So, if you look over the, so that's 2.6, 5.7, you know, it's closer to almost $10 million over the course of the next three years.
Okay, thank you.
But keep in mind that fund balance is always open for any given year. You have two years of fund balance open. You have the year that you're working in. So anything where expenditures are below revenue would come back to replenish whatever fund balance you're proposing to use. So, that's almost like a below-the-line adjustment because we would be proposing a budget in advance of the closeout of the year that we're currently in, so we wouldn't know how much fund balance we would actually be using or adding to at the end of the year that we're currently in. Okay, we talked a little bit about tax rates, and again, this is the uncomfortable slide, at least for me, only because I have to make a sort of a line in the sand in terms of what we are presenting to the public on what the tax levy increase is and what it translates in terms of tax rate. So, there's roughly a $1.6 million proposed increase in the tax levy, which represents 2.3%. When you compare the distribution of that tax levy between the towns of Bethlehem and the towns of New Scotland, these are how the tax rates actually stack up. When I had done this as early as five days ago, those were the numbers. But, of course, the tentative assessment rolls came out May 1st, and because I can't lead well enough alone, I decided to look to just see what the actual increase was. The actual estimated increase for the town of Bethlehem right now is roughly 1.6%, and the town of New Scotland is actually a decrease of 3%. And that's tied to changes in assessed value, and changes in exemptions, and changes in market value, and how that all gets sort of thrown into the equation. And that's why you can actually see, despite a tax levy increase of 2.3%, it doesn't necessarily represent an increase in the tax rate in a comparable amount. So, again, at the time of this writing, the estimated increase for the town of Bethlehem was $56 for $100,000 of assessed value, and in the town of New Scotland, it was actually a $46 decrease per $100,000 of assessed value. Again, these numbers will all change one more time between now and June 30th. The final assessment roll will not be available to the district until the earliest July 1st. I do not anticipate a huge change from the revised numbers I gave you compared to this, but there is the possibility over the next several weeks. On ballot propositions, the district is proposing one ballot proposition for transportation. The ballot proposition proposes the addition of 170-passenger electric bus and two-passenger gasoline 4x4 suburban-style vehicles, both of which will be used for student transportation purposes, for a total proposition estimated cost of roughly $533,000. The actual bus proposition language is laid out here. You'll see there is a bit of an increase of roughly $35,000 between the estimated cost and the language in the bus prop. I added $35,000 just because of some past experience that the district has had in terms of supply chain pinches and cost increases. So, it is estimated that, or anticipated that, the acquisition cost for the vehicles will only be $533,000. If, however, the district finds itself in a bit of a pinch in terms of supply chain, there is some flexibility, up to $568,000. The district will be voting on, the public will be voting on three board seats. Current individuals interested in those positions are listed above. Christine Beck, Ewan McNay, Holly Dellenbaugh, Meredith Moriarty. Just as a reminder, we have a couple of key important dates here. On May 7th is the last date to submit questions for the Meet the Candidates event hosted by the Albany County League of Women Voters. May 9th is the last date to request an absentee ballot application to be sent by mail. May 10th is the Meet the Candidates event. May 15th is the last date to request an absentee ballot application in person, and Tuesday, May 16th, between 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in Jim A., is the actual vote on both the 23-24 proposed budget, the bus proposition, as well as three vacant board seats. There's also the library budget and two board trustees for the library on the ballot as well.
And absentee ballots must be received by 5:00 PM on the 16th, correct?
16th, yes.
Any questions for John? Thank you. Next on the agenda is our 2023-2024
Next on the agenda is our 2023, 2024 school budget hearing. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on our proposed budget as required by law. The notice of this hearing was published in the spotlight, and a copy of the proof of publication will be included within the official minutes. At this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments either for or against on the proposed budget. I ask that you please state your name for the record prior to offering any remarks. Seeing no members of the public who wish to offer any comments or against the budget at this time, I close the public hearing. Next on the agenda is our presentation by Dr. Hurst with an update on our Yonder pouch implementation.
Okay, thank you for inviting me back to provide this update. As you know, we've had several discussions on the pouches, and we've had some sort of moving timelines as we've gone through this process. So I just want to give you an update in terms of where we are with the timeline. As previously mentioned, this initiative really does hit on all four of our core values. And I think it is best said, Doug LaMotta actually had a great quote on this that kind of does tie all four of these things together. That's that "An institution with a dual purpose of fostering students' learning and well-being cannot ignore an intruder's cell phones. It actively erodes a young mind's ability to focus and sustain attention and also magnifies anxiety, loneliness, and depression." And it is within this sort of theme that we decided to investigate solutions to cell phones within our building. As you know, currently, we have pouches at the back of classrooms, which to some extent has curtailed phone use in classrooms, but not entirely. But it also has not at all addressed the use of phones in hallways, common areas, during lunch. And this is really when we want our students to be social and interact with one another. And because they're allowed to have phones, many times that is not what is occurring. So basically, as talked about in prior presentations, it's a fairly simple system. Students walk in the door each day. They own the pouches, right? The pouches are always in their possession. They walk in, they lock the pouch, go to classes, go throughout the day, end of day, unlock pouch, and go home. So sort of, you know, one of the things we've heard from other schools in implementation is that the fact that the students still have the phones with them all day long does offer some sort of psychological safety in terms of if the phone is not leaving their possession. It can very much be thought of as sort of a seatbelt in a car. So this actually, just on Tuesday, our Surgeon General released this report and held a press conference. And I think this just further highlights sort of the reason we went down this road. He refers to an epidemic of loneliness and isolation. And one of his four pillars actually targets the use of technology and in particular, social media as being a huge contributor to our country's epidemic of loneliness and isolation. And he points, and these are many of the considerations that we had in investigating this solution to cell phones in the schools. You know, humans are wired for social connection. We become more and more isolated over time. Again, I speak to this when you walk down the halls, when you're in cafeterias and you see students sitting three, four to a table, and they're all on their phones, not interacting whatsoever. They've lost that social connection. Social connection significantly improves the health and well-being of individuals. And as presented prior, both our in-district Student Youth Risk Behavior Survey and the National Survey that was just released a month ago points to a huge, huge uptick in students feeling lonely, students feeling isolated, students having suicidal ideations. And these all come from the lack of connection. So that said, social connection is vital to community health and success, and together we can advance social connection and improve our nation's public health. So this was just on Tuesday that this report was released. So I think that just, it seems like every day, we're seeing more and more evidence of cell phones being introduced in ways that are detrimental to both youth and adults. And I know I presented a video, and there's much more information in my prior presentation, but I did want to kind of just say that this just sort of summarizes all of that in one nice package. So where are we with our implementation timeline? So as you know, last year, we began researching solutions for cell phones in schools. We looked at the idea of just having the pouches in the classrooms. We looked at students just having them in their bags throughout the day. And those two things really, you know, it puts the onus on individual classroom teachers to have to deal with that. It puts the onus on people that are in the halls having to deal with it, where once they're away, shown to be locked as students enter the building, it does sort of make this a much more manageable process. So we did, in the fall, we visited Skahari. We brought students, faculty, administration for the visit, and we stayed about half-day. And we watched several class changes. We met with students, we met with teachers, and they've seen a huge positive impact since implementing this in the fall. And that's not to say that everybody was happy with the initial, hey, let's do this pouch thing, right? There was a lot of opposition. But within a few weeks, they saw a change in culture, and even the folks that were sort of dead-set against this had a change of heart and thought that they saw an improvement in the way that their students were interacting. An improvement even at home, students were so used to not having their phones with them all the time, they weren't pulling them out at the dinner table anymore and things of that nature. So in October, as she does every year, Jody visited all of our district buildings to go over our goals for the year. And as part of those presentations, she presented the concept of the pouches to all of our faculty, district-wide. In November, we had our parent safety forum, and this was also a component of that presentation. Back in February, I had an initial meeting with Yonder just to understand a little bit more about the implementation process. And after that meeting, I had them actually come in, and they met with our entire high school administrative team, as well as with Jody and some of our, a couple counselors. On March 15th, as part of my budget presentation, I presented sort of the overview in much greater detail than I am tonight on the pouches and the implementation. On April 3rd, we made presentations to the President's Council, which are the presidents of all the different PTAs across the district, also lab school, athletics, and a few other groups within the BC community. That same day, we also presented to the high school faculty, and we had a representative from Yonder here to answer questions. Tonight, I'm giving sort of a final update on our timeline. And after this meeting, more detailed communication will be going home from our communications office to all families. On May 19th, Yonder will be back to observe our arrival and dismissal process to help us formulate what day one will look like. On May 23rd to 25th, we will be hosting assemblies last period for 9th graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders, so that we can sort of, again, go through essentially the rationale for this initiative and allow students to ask questions that they might have. And then as we come back to school then, on September 8th, that will be pouch assignment day, or 7th will be pouch assignment day, and the 8th will be the day that Yonder is still here and they're checking pouches as students walk in to ensure that the process is going as expected. So the reason I also bring this timeline up is, as you know, originally, our initial timeline is we were going to try to implement this the day after spring break, and we decided that that was a little bit too close to AP exams, and we didn't want to sort of disrupt that process. So then we considered doing it actually in that May 23rd to 25th range, which kind of at that point, you're so close to the end of the year, we decided that it's probably best just to hold the assemblies at that time because we do want to have a chance to meet with students and then implement next year as opposed to implementing it this So that's what I have in terms of update for the timeline.
Is there a plan to have any parent forums or any kind of a way for parents who have questions or concerns?
So in the communication that goes out, we have information with how they can send comments or questions back. And then we'll put them together in an FAQ. If there's something that there's a lot of questions about, we'll try and address that in a different manner.
Okay. Other questions for you? Next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone.
Ewan McNeigh, full disclosure, I'm running for school board in the election, as you saw a moment ago. So I look forward hopefully to working with many of you in the next year. Thanks to Dr. Hurst for the presentation. I think, you know, we all agree on the objectives, right? We'd like the students to be more connected, have more social time, more focus in particular probably is a benefit. What I didn't see were many data. And so one of the things I wanted to talk about maybe was how we're going to get data on the effectiveness of this program, how you might compare it to other programs. So I'd be curious to hear from the board what your metrics will be, how you're going to measure, you know, the improvements that you're hoping for, how do you plan to collect those data, what are your measurement tools going to be, how are those validated? Part of the issue I accept is there isn't much data on this, right? So there are Yonder pouches, you know, they have some other issues, the whole Dave Chappelle Association, fears about safety and so on. But there really aren't many data yet because they haven't been used that much in schools. So I looked at the available literature. The American Psychological Association has three published reports. They're not all peer-reviewed. Basically, their conclusion was there's no difference in effectiveness they saw versus measures like the existing sleeves, right? So one of the things they saw was an increased risk of student stress and anxiety, occasional, not common, risks of depression and bipolar symptoms being triggered by the lock feature, right? So the fact that people knew their phone wasn't available even if they felt they needed it, as opposed to being available on a non-lock device, that had an increased risk of student harm. And so that's something I hope you'll definitely have a plan for assessing and measuring, you know, what are the potential negative side effects of this? There's one published study, I'll send it to the board if you like, Halliburton, November last year, presented non-locking devices versus locking devices, and found that students actually first preferred the non-locking devices, and second, found a significant increase in self-responsibility. So one of the things you mentioned was, you know, spill over into the home. What they found was that having a non-locking device greatly increased the self-responsibility and lack of use at home versus a locking device. And so I don't know how much of this has been assessed by the board, but it seems like the limited data available support a non-locking solution as opposed to a locking solution. The other recommendation of the APA, the American Psychological Association, was that mindfulness intervention things, you may have seen Noom, which is a weight loss program, that kind of nudge. So the mindfulness habits, just reminding people, here's a survey at the end of every day, how much did you use your cell phone today? When you come in first thing in the morning, what's your plan for cell phone use today? That had a better improvement in socialization and also an improvement in self-responsibility. And that seems to be things that we'd want for all of our students. So summarize all of that. I'd really be interested in the data you guys have looked at, why you concluded that the locking devices was the best approach, and what your plans are for measurement and data collection going forwards. Because I think database decisions would be really good here. Thanks.
Thank you. I was waiting to see if anyone else.
Oh, no, thank you. And thank you for that. That was really helpful. So I'm Kelly Souders. I have a daughter in the school, as well as nieces, nephews, and an older daughter graduated from here. And I too am concerned about the, about cell phone usage. We've always had limits at home. I think it is, it is important for kids to have limits. What I am very concerned about is the idea that locking the cell phones away during the day is going to solve all the problems. I agree. I see a lot of the kids in the community service work I do or with their teams and clubs. Kids are struggling. They have a lot of mental health issues and other social issues. I just don't know that this is the solution. And my concern is that this is somewhat being rushed into without parent, community, or student input and listening to them and asking them what they really need and want. And I understand some of them are too young to know that, but some of them are practically adults. We're talking about 18-year-olds here who are seniors in high school, who are going to be going off to college next year. And by doing this, we're telling them we can't trust them, that we don't trust them to have impulse control and be able to follow rules. And so I have a problem with that. And as a parent, I'd like to understand what other alternatives have been looked into for the high school to improve mental health, socialization. So have we considered offering more activities or clubs during the day? Safe places for students to go who don't have friends, who don't feel like they have anyone to talk to? I'm really concerned that if you take the phone away without some of these other options or considerations, that we're really going to do more harm than good. So I'm personally not supportive of this at this time, really without additional information. And I hope that the board will consider that and think about the big picture and get other parent input. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who?
Thank you. My name's Leanne Pinchak-Vilatus. I have a daughter at the high school and a daughter at the middle school. And I absolutely understand the problems with phones, but I agree that we haven't dealt with the underlying problem, and we're perhaps taking away a necessary crutch and leaving the students to fall down. I think there's been a lack of communication to the parents. I'm glad to hear that there's a communication coming. But parents with children with health issues don't know when and if those children are going to be able to use their phones. Children with internships who use them to figure out where they need to be after school. We also haven't been provided with information as to how the unlocking is going to work, if students go directly to clubs after school or to athletics, students leaving early. And so there's this void that we're operating in, and I think that that makes us even more fearful. And so perhaps an FAQ will come out, but I think that you haven't given the parents the opportunity to ask all of the questions, a number of which are being raised tonight, including sort of the lack of data that was raised, and how individual problems are going to be addressed and how this is going to help. I understand on a broader level how we think this is going to help the social problems, but again, you're taking away a crutch that many students need, particularly post-pandemic, and not necessarily offering them a replacement. Instead, we're just removing something. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cara Brusso. I echo most of the sentiments we've heard already today, but I think my primary concern really has to focus on what are the problems with the current sleeves? You know, how many students don't comply? Is it taking away classroom time from the teachers to make them comply? Is it a large percentage of students that are doing this? And are you involving parents in trying to make the sleeve project more successful? I think it's clear that this Yonder program is not just a substitute for the sleeve. I think, I think you're trying to go further and do more, and I, and I don't object, I don't disagree with the goals of the whole, we all need to unplug, we all need to be more focused. But if the sleeve program can be improved, I think we should, we should spend our time investigating that in terms of cutting down cell phone usage. I know we mentioned that cuts down usage in the class, and now we have to focus on hallways and lunch, but really, do we? I think the problem I have is there's really going to be a tail on this. You think you're going to solve a problem of creating, you know, this great socialization and everybody's going to become a natural extrovert and talk with everybody in the cafeteria? But the kids I know and the kids I see avoid the cafeteria, and they schedule classes so they don't have to go to the cafeteria. And I wish they would go to the cafeteria, I wish they would socialize, but you can't just expect that to happen spontaneously by locking up their cell phone. There needs to be a path to get there. And I'm afraid there's going to be a trail of more loneliness, more anxiety, more disassociation from the kids unless they're given some resources in order to become more social. COVID didn't help any of us. The world we live in isn't helping any of us. I know cell phones are part of the problem, but removing that cell phone, whether it's a crutch or in my view, a security blanket for some kids, is going to solve some problems and probably create more. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to kind of, helpful intervention the school could promote. Both the APA and the Surgeon General's report both reference that the most important time to not be on the phone if your student is right at bedtime, late evening. And so perhaps that could be something that's also given increased focus rather than worrying maybe so much about, you know, the cafeteria. The key point for mental health is late-night use when you might be isolated anyway, and that's what's causing a lot of the issues. So I'd really like to see the school district work more with parents, obviously, and with the students themselves to get that message across, that you really want to be off your phones when you go into bed and get back to sleep habits, and that's going to be the best time to intervene for mental health. So thanks.
Do we have anyone else who has a comment?
Sorry, I'm a little short. Hi, my name's Natasha Ruiz. I'm a parent. I have a son who's a freshman, I have a daughter I have a daughter who graduated in '21. And I agree, I agree with the parents that have spoken up this evening. There's a lot of buzz on social media in the parent community, and I don't know if the board is aware of that. It seems to be as of recent when it, when this was really starting to be implemented. And we just kind of felt like we were in the, in the dark about most of this. I will say that I do have a child who has some social issues in school and relies on that phone to check in with his family once or twice a day, and that gets him through the day. You know, we have a little family group chat, just telling him like, hey bud, you're going to be okay, just focus on this next period, we're going to see you in a couple of hours. He doesn't have a huge circle of friends. He doesn't go to the cafeteria. He goes to the library and he decompresses on that phone for 10 or 15 minutes to put a smile on his face to watch a little YouTube video. I don't think that this is creating a lack of socialization. And again, I don't think you're going to create a bunch of extroverts by locking it up. I'm a clinician in the community. I'm a nurse practitioner. I see a lot of adolescents and high school kids, they're talking about this. And the message that's being communicated is, we don't trust you. Locking up a phone all of a sudden out of the blue to them is like, what did we do wrong? We feel like we're being punished. So I think that we need to change that messaging and really create more opportunities for these kids to socialize in different ways and create more support for them. You know, it's like, go to the guidance office if you have an issue. Well, we've done that a bunch of times and no one's really available throughout the day. They're stretched, they're doing other things. And so part of their connection is texting a friend and saying, hey, I'm so stressed about my next test. And the friend who's across the building says, you know what, you're going to do great, hang in there. That's really what's going on here. Most of them are really good students and really well behaved. They're not the issue. And so the ones that are not compliant, I feel like a very small percentage of the population, and these kids feel like they're being punished for the small amount of kids that are misusing these phones. So I say that we have a great population of kids here who are respectful and smart and mature and really do handle most situations with their phones wisely. And I think we need to treat them with respect and we will get that respect back. We just need to create a different model for this. So, thanks.
Next on our agenda, item six, action items, A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one and two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 14.
So moved. Next.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through six.
So moved. Next.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent through the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anyone with us tonight who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone.
Ewan McNay again. This was something that was brought up to me while I was campaigning, actually. I said I would bring it to the board. As you guys are planning for transportation for the coming year, one thing that was requested was to consider the impact of inequity on athletic transportation. So basically, you know, I'm sure many of us have had the, well, one kid has tennis at three and another kid has track at five and how do I, and I'm at work and my partner's at work. Okay, you get the message. I suspect there is a potential level of inequity there being created for kids' participation. So those who don't have parents or resources to arrange transport as much may miss out on the many, many benefits of school athletics. And so I just don't know whether there's a way for that to be supported more by the district in terms of arranging more buses. I don't have a solution for it, right? I know there's a problem with bus driver availability as it is, but it'd be nice to at least have an option for people who don't have parents available to take off time during the school day or during the workday to get them to places, to have a little support there. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Item eight, future meetings and events. On May 10th at 6:30 is the Meet the Candidates event that will be hosted by the League of Women Voters on Zoom. On May 16th, in the high school gym from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM is our annual budget vote and election. And on May 17th, that is the, the next regularly scheduled board meeting, anticipating executive session at 6:00 and reconvening the meeting at 7:00. We do need to go back into executive session to, to discuss an additional personnel matter. So if I could have a motion to go back into executive session?
So moved. Next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries. So we will adjourn to executive session, but before we do so, I just want to remind our PIG students to come up and sign out at one of the sign up sheets, please. Thank you.